I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the September voting meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. I would announce that we were in executive session discussing both personnel and litigation matters. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? See no one leaping forward. We'll see right into the business at hand. We have two sets of minutes to be approved. Is there a motion to approve those?
No move, he's second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. The treasurer's report?
I'm with treasurer's report, I've shaded in the section that I agree.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The treasurer's report is approved. We have three policies to consider. First is policy 202, the eligibility of non-resident students, a revision to that which would allow person-on-persons establishing a business in the township to get a credit or get a discount on student tuition. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second, yes, so moved.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Discussion.
Well, I just, the only thing I would say is your comment in the paper about this being a late attempt to bring people into the community, which I agree with. I think it's, you know, I do think that's what it is and I think I agree with what Joe had said about how many people might take advantage of it. I would just hope that the township continues to give the school district some support when we look to do some projects within the district. I know that we're looking at this bus barn and depending upon which way that goes, it's going to require some assistance from the township to help us to manage it, perhaps minimize the cost. So, you know, while we're working sort of hand in glove to support each other, I would hope it comes back to us as well.
That's awesome. Been praying for that for fifteen years.
Sure.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say we'll be voting against this. I think everyone needs to pay their fair share. Businesses that are in the community are paying their business taxes. Businesses have many, many tax breaks that they get when they file their state taxes and when they file their federal taxes. It sounds like a good idea, but when you look at it, someone's going to have to pay the half tuition cost that the business owner who has supposedly enough money to make a business out of a business, and it might be the widow or widower, or someone struggling to pay their taxes. And if we look sometimes at who is delinquent with their taxes, many times it's quite a number of businesses here in the community itself. So, I believe they do not want to transfer their share of tuition onto the local taxpayers.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to comment, first off, as a business owner for eleven years, I can tell you that I ended up paying more because I had the other side of the social security debt. So, I know that I paid eight percent extra every time I paid the native payroll that was sent out. But, as far as, again, additional costs, again, we're giving the administration flexibility with this program where, again, we are making sure that it's an open seat, where it's not going to be any additional costs for additional teachers, additional buildings, anything of that nature. We have the ability to say no. The bottom line is, once your fixed costs are covered, everything else is just helping the bottom line. So, in this particular case, again, I do not think there's going to be a run for this program. I think it may be one or two people here and there. I don't see any issue whatsoever if there's a seat available. It's not going to cost anyone any additional money.
I appreciate what you're saying, and however, I will be voting against it because I just don't think that this is something that we should do at this time relative to students' tuition. But I would like to suggest that perhaps we can look at some other alternatives that would create the same end result, which is to welcome a business into our community and give it support. And I believe that there might be some other options. I just feel that this is opening up issues that we don't really have opened up. Thank you.
Hearing none, further discussion? All in favor of policy 202, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, the policy is in effect. Policy 222, tobacco use, revision of the existing policy to include e-cigarettes and other such sundry things. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the new tobacco use policy, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Policy 249, bullying and cyberbullying. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion.
Uh, yes, maybe that's the same thing you were going to say.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I think Dr. Bader asked that we check with Mr. Malzni to see if there's any way we could expand the language about events that take place, bullying events that take place outside of the school. And we believe, and Mr. Malzni agrees, we had talked with our administrators at our administrative staff meeting last week, and we did some research during the meeting, and we believe our policy conforms with the law and the principles feel like it gives them enough leverage to go after students who bully other students even outside the school setting. And John sent me an email, I don't want to speak for you, John, but reading his email, he believes that our language is totally in keeping with the legal extent that we can go.
Yeah, I see.
If you look at the definition of bullying act, I guess it's the third line, it says, "which occurs in a school setting or outside a school setting." So, it's the same right here, so as strong as it is within the school setting on that language, it's that strong outside the school setting. So, I don't think you could have any power.
Right, thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor of the policy 249, bullying, cyberbullying, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Not on the agenda, but we passed out the proposed 2014-15 goals. These are essentially the same as we reviewed a month ago, however, I did have one suggestion, which is the last line, our revising, the board revised the administrator's evaluation form in accordance with state requirements and the board's priorities. Is there any other discussion on, I'm sorry, most approved goals?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion.
According to the second goal that's proposed here, I question whether this is something the board should be handling, or should be looking towards the superintendent or the assistant superintendent to be looking into. I don't think it's something that we as a board could actually look into in a competent manner. I don't think it's something we could exactly measure our ability to do, and frankly, I don't think we could accomplish it on our own without their direct help.
The same could be said of number three. I mean, many times the board has goals that the administration has to really act on and then report back to the board. So, I don't think it's an appropriate goal, but you're right, we have to do the labor on that.
You just read the feasibility study?
Yeah.
Some sort of language.
Something like that, yeah, that's a good idea.
Cause and feels, these goals, these study?
Yeah, directly administration to me, something like that.
Cause is a term that we use, has been used in the past to indicate you're not really going to do it, but you're going to have some.
Cause it to be done.
That may be through my head, Paul, I'll bet.
Cause and effect. So, how is that going to leave now, Paul?
Cause a feasibility study of an in-house or in-district cooperative alternate education program.
Thank you. We can bring this back at the discussion meeting in October and then any other revisions, any other language revisions could occur at that point in time, unless you want to work on it.
The floor has been open for the past month for any additions, and they have been included. If we would like to table this, I'll accept a motion to table, but otherwise, I'm going to ask for a vote. Any further discussion? All in favor of the goals as proposed, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The goals are approved.
Let's just, uh, do this. I move that the board of school directors approves a sub-grant contract for implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Part D between the purpose county intermediate unit number fourteen grantee and Exeter Township School District, a sub-grantee or contractor for a total amount of six hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars, seventy-six cents for the project period July first, 2014 through June thirty, 2015.
Second.
Furthermore.
Further.
Furthermore, the board of school directors authorizes District Superintendent Beverly Morton, Doctor, to execute the year.
Go ahead, sir.
Still seconded, yeah.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
How does this compare to the cost for last year?
It's a source of revenue, six hundred forty thousand for thirteen fourteen, so it's all a little bit, like forty thousand something like that.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the nomination, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors ratifies the following change orders for the Awatton Site Work Project listed in attachment six D.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of ratifying the charges incidentally of the Awatton Creek Project, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves an annual service agreement with Siemens Industry Inc. in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars to support and maintain the building automation systems at Jacksonwood Elementary and Awatton Creek Elementary. The annual cost is 1.7% higher than the prior year contract with Siemens.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of approving this Siemens contract, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the board of school directors approves AEM Architects Inc. to complete the conceptual design for a new transportation center at Awatton Creek Elementary. The fees related to this phase of work are as follows: schematics programming at eighteen thousand, land development thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, design development twenty-four thousand, construction documents fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred. Fees are based on AEM proposal provided on April seventh, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion.
Well, where does this put us in the process in terms of making the decision on the construction of the new facility? I'm just trying to understand where we are because we're spending tens of thousands of dollars at this point, Dan.
These are the studies and plans required before we could go on with any project, with the project out there. And we, AEM would come, brief us on their findings and what they come up with on this, and then the board would consider whether we're going to proceed or not. So, this is a study that gives us final costs, that's, so to speak.
It also gets you all the plans.
Yes.
And they're going to represent us in part of the township for all our land development processes, so that would all be taken care of at the same time. So, anything we needed to get done community-wise, we have all the permit in place, and all we have to do at that point is we have to ask.
The permit would be done?
Excuse me?
Permit would be done?
That's what the emphasis.
Well, we have to approve the plans before they can go through the township.
But it's in the land development. That's what the land development is.
But we have to approve the plans before we go through the township.
Correct.
So, it's not going anywhere until we approve the plans.
But then we wouldn't be approving the total sum cost here.
Is the total?
For services. Yeah, I think the point here is that we're approving this cost whether we decide to go forward or not.
That's correct.
And then, yeah, and that's, and I don't know if I'm reading this from Peter's mind.
No, no, you are.
My question is, too, it seems like a lot of money if we don't know where we're going. I think if I was a design organization and someone came to me and they said they were going to be signing my consultant fee for this amount, I would think that I'm going to go forward with my planned operation so I could provide for my client the product so they could then build their new facility. That would be what we're going after.
So, in effect, we're going to vote on this, but in effect, we're also, in a way, silently ratifying the construction of the three million dollar project.
We haven't ratified the construction, but we are.
But that's what you're saying.
We are saying that we're going to move in a forward motion towards what we've been discussing all the way, and why we asked them to evaluate the two options of whether we could maintain operations at the existing facility on Car Road, or if the money better spent moving into a new location that could be a more productive operation for our facilities.
And in your discussions with AEM, is, are they assuming that by agreeing to this, we're going forward with the project?
Right, that these costs, these breakdowns would get us to the point of bidding. So, and just to summarize, the, if the board were to, if you want this summary, I talked to AEM today to really get my arms wrapped around what the timeline would be now, if things have gone on for a few months. If it was board-approved, I'd spend a couple weeks finalizing what the configuration fee that building would be. The board approval of the schematic plan would take place on eleven eighteen, November eighteenth, and that, cost estimates would be available at that point.
And that's the construction.
Right, just a general idea of what this whole thing might cost. It's a schematic plan. But a lot of things happen at the same time. You have Statcalves who's involved with land development, starting in November, December, going to the township with a preliminary plan, a sketch plan in November to the township. That's first, and a preliminary land development plan, there had to be a hearing, and then a final plan in January to the township for final approval. And then the board supervisors has to approve at some point, probably in April.
And where does Pen Dot work?
Well, at the same times, all these things are going on, permitting is being obtained through the different regulatory agencies.
As I say, and I think about that poor guy opening the Dunkin' Donuts in Ole, he can't get it open because he has to put a treading lane over there, and that's for a Dunkin' Donuts. He's not going to run since the school was over there. Just, you know, thinking about the permitting process and delay the time and the cost.
Right, the indicated permitting would be obtained during November through January. And January through March, construction documents will be developed while all the other processes are going on. And then April twenty-first, final review with the school board. And which ready is everyone, you know, at that point, they give approval to move ahead to bid the project.
So, while there are other approvals that will be necessary in the future, this approval being in excess of a hundred thousand dollars probably shouldn't be undertaken if the board is not serious about pursuing this, I would say would be my recommendation.
Right, I mean, it has been put on here to determine whether we're moving ahead with the project.
Right.
Are we still confident that three million dollars is all in for this entire process? And we confident that we can get the building, do the land development order, achieve the township likely improvements, and do the Pen Dot road work, pull that price back? Because it seems to me like we're pretty light.
And until we see cost estimates, you know, I can only base it on what Wilson's costs were for what they did, however, they have a flat site. So, until we get more information from the land development and the architect, and they provide us with a cost estimate in the schematic plan in November, we're not going to. I can't, I cannot say three million dollars until they give us more information.
Well, we do know that, I guess, the construction at Awatton is still in progress, and how does that work with the Greenhold School concept? Must we follow anything there on this land? You know what I'm saying? Or that's.
There's separate projects.
So, I mean, we're like.
Yeah, it has, the land is, the land is land, and each project stands alone on its own accord.
Okay, all right, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wanted to.
And even, maybe in what we're looking at doing, there are, you could conceptually say there are types of non-intrusive type of design elements, and the fact that we're not looking at creating a totally impermeable site where we'll have a block stone that allows for proliferation, things of that nature, not that we're building a green facility. But at the same time, we're not looking at, I mean, something that's going to be totally just a solid land mass in there that would prevent any kind of infiltration from it.
So, you don't think there would be any impact on the school and?
Totally, totally separate, the way they occur. That's its own operation.
Okay. I was also still concerned about the communication between the, when we no longer have landlines or very few landlines, with the communication between bus drivers and the central administration there, if we go to all, you know, cell phones.
The only problem, Pat, is the inside of a Awatton Creek school because of the way it's built. That's the problem. It's not, it's not the cell activities. The minute you walk outside, your cell activity is fine.
It's the concrete and steel that was put into the, preventing any kind of.
The gentleman, the people that are in there, and they're not going to be walking outside all the time.
No, they're not going to be inside an Awatton Creek. They're going to basically be in a, for lack of another word, a general steel-type building where it's, you know, basically steel framing, maybe a little bit of, you know, accent wall to tie things together, but it's really a basic structure where signals can penetrate easily. It's not going to have all the infrastructure that's around it.
Well, will they check that out in the process before we commit to everything?
I think that's like, I mean, you can only tell when you're building, I mean, you can take a test of my house, if you're in my living room, I get reception, you go to my kitchen, I get no reception over my bathroom, is it a cloudy day or is it a sunny day? You know, you really, Exeter is not the most happy place for cell coverage, I mean, depending where you're at.
I'm just concerned because with transportation and students and everything else, that's not, that's not.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there any further discussion on the moving with the planning of the project?
Just a couple of things. One, just, again, I've wrestled with this time and time again because, one, the current facility we have is, to put it nicely, is a piece of crap. And we've done a very intensive transportation study that says that we're unbelievably efficient. In fact, we were able to use just our own transportation to actually reroute a kindergarten program and save ourselves money last year, and that was, the gentleman, we did do that. And we do know that if we do, would turn it back over and then rent our buses back, we're going to take a couple million dollar hit. But, then we have to make the decision of, do we want to pay what it's going to cost per year, and it's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Right, the additional wall, debt service.
So, so that's what, that's what the cost is for the debt service long-term.
The debt service, that includes the operational costs as well. There'll be the operational costs and all the debt service.
The operation cost will be the same as we have now.
Well, no, I think we're hiring a mechanic.
No, I was, no, when we went through the budget process, I think the discussions, when I had said these might be cost, I was pretty much shot down with no.
So, we're not going to hire any mechanic, then why would we need four bays?
Uh, well.
That's in the design process.
There are two mechanics and there's a mechanic supplement.
I know, I mean, if you're, we have 1.7 million dollars in facility projects just sitting out there that Kim prepared for us last week, and now we're looking to put in a new structure, it's also going to be a lot of things, it's going to be difficult for us to manage. You know, I feel like we were, I think, I feel like we got on the scale, but we kept one leg off here. You know, we talked about the efficiency of the, of the service, but we haven't layered in the debt or the additional operating cost, see whether or not contracting is an option. I'm not advocating for outsourcing, I'm not advocating for contracting, but we have eighty-five hundred houses that pay taxable taxes here in the county or in the township who, you know, probably would ask us to ask the question, do we look as efficient in fourteen with three, with minimum of three million dollars of debt being carried by the service than we did in twelve, when we did factor in the three million dollars of debt and additional operating costs? So, that's all I'm saying is, you know, I could imagine it's probably some fairly simple formula that we could go back to that 2012 study, look at the potential debt that we're taking on and the additional operating costs. If there are additional operating costs, and see if we still look as good today as we did in 2012. I believe the bus drivers do a good job, I'm not questioning what they do on a day-to-day basis, I'm just questioning, when you put three million dollars of debt on top of something that doesn't look as good with that on it.
Because I, I guess what I look at, Mike, is the fact that when we did that study, it was basically saying, do we operate with or without a contractor? And what we found was, when you look at them, pretty much, we're just as good as a contractor, and we don't get as much subsidy out of the state. If the state changes their subsidy formula and reduces the amount they give to those contractors, all of a sudden, Exeter looks like is a very good idea. So, we never know what's going to happen in Harrisburg, we just saw through the whole budgetary process. That's a very challenging experience alone. But I think that when we look at that facility, and I, I don't know where the word "barn" ever got there. That's one of those things, I mean, when I think of a barn, I think every, yeah, but I think of everything that has to go underneath. I have people at church coming to me, why are we building a bus barn? And they look at me like I'm going to be storing all of these vehicles in one location, one, and, no, it is a maintenance garage. I mean, do we need four bays? I think we do need the bays because right now, we cannot put the vehicles in there to work on productively with the, they have. One of those bays will be a wash bay because we need to be able to maintain the vehicles and clean them and get them ready to go out on snowy days as we're just making sure we maintain the vehicles. And I just think is that if we decide we're going to make an operation, we have to make sure it's going to operate at its best capabilities instead of keep putting something out there that says, yeah, we hope you can do things and try to keep things together. I mean, right now, if you walk over there and you see. I mean, right now, if you walk over there and you see the ability to keep things in a safe environment as far as storage, you have to start wondering about the security of the facility, because it is only one padlock away, type of thing. Versus, if you build a new situation and you have to correctly bill in your storage, maybe it's not just a retrofit of just putting up with the old shed out back, or we have a situation where we just dealt with the athletic facility, time just pushes its way across our road. You know, I mean, things like that can happen. I mean.
Things can happen.
Yeah, it can happen.
I think if you refer back to the study, our cost per pupil for bus operations, transportation, was around $400, maybe $435 or something. I don't have the study with me. The rest of the county, and at that time, there were fourteen, there were fourteen people with contracted, fourteen districts with contracted services, there were only four that didn't have us, have. And we were one quarter of what the rest of the county paid. We were even less than a quarter of what the state paid per pupil for transportation. When I look at 4,000 students, and you're looking at saving 400 per student on the average, that's $1,600,000 that we already have in savings. And I think building the facility will enhance that effectiveness that the section has already displayed. So we're already saving $1,600,000 compared to all the fourteen, the other seventeen districts in the county. And this can only help.
My only concern about this particular motion is, is that I don't want to spend $100,000 and then walk away from the project. And I, you know, and I'm not sure, it just seems to vary from day to day whether or not there's support, there's support here to go forward with the project. And I would question $100,000 commitment and then walking away as far as how, that doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Are we ready to vote? On favorite, any money to proceed forward with the bus barn project, please indicate so we're saying not. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Show of hands, please. All in favor, raise the hand, please.
Yes.
All opposed? Close hand is what? Five, four in favor. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors authorizes a fiscal year 2014-2015 purchase of additional Chromebooks for grades 10 through 12 to complete the Computer Laptop One-to-One Initiative. The estimated cost to acquire 1,100 plus Chromebooks is between $375,000 and $405,000.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Discussion.
Joe, I have a question for you. On the initiative, if I just recall, for the freshmen that were receiving it, they were going to maintain that piece of equipment for the balance of their years, and then as a senior, because of functional obsolescence, wherever they're, they were going to keep that piece of equipment, is that correct?
Our plan is to, you know, phase in with freshmen's moving forward. Next year, we would obviously, you know, fill in the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. But then, you know, after the four years, we would start, the freshman would get, incoming freshmen would get new equipment.
So again, the senior, what would happen with, at the end of the senior year, what happens with that piece of equipment?
It's really a determining factor at that point. Either we would, if it's still of value, we would possibly trickle it down, or there's, we have to figure out if we would want to sell it off then as an asset, or allow them to buy out the equipment. We just haven't really determined the tail end of the, the, again, when we, when we do 10, 11, 12, there's a possibility of a lease, so we just have to figure out whatever the financing would be and how the financing term, you know, term would end.
But if we did 10, 11, 12, we would be able to take 12 and give it to the eighth graders now?
Yes.
And loop it back that way?
Yeah, it would be only one year old, so we would then, we would do that for the first year, first two years, we would.
And then the last thing is, if we did roll this out to everyone right now, which, I mean, it's great, do we have the bandwidth and will the teachers be able to utilize the property?
I mean, our, our plan, Dan Wilczek is here to also address the plan for professional development. Our plan was initially to just do the ninth grade, and then to kind of work with our pilot group of teachers, our ninth grade teachers, ninth grade being the only grade that we really have a relative type of academy where we can focus with the ninth grade teachers and have populations that are relatively, you know, almost all ninth grade. We have a very progressive plan in place, a very aggressive plan in place with our early release days, our in-service days, we're meeting with our staff, developing, you know, assessing our staff at levels of technology integration and building professional development. At this point, our ninth grade, our ninth grade staff, the plan for that group, that is going to be a full year of professional development. And I think the equipment, if we get the equipment, it could be a distraction to the progress of moving ahead with just one grade level as a pilot. I don't know that there's any way with, you know, with other projects that are happening with STEM, with math, that we could really give it the full resources that are required in year one.
I have some questions. Yeah. You were projecting that with the ninth graders, the rollout would be in October, November? So it's a feasibility, if you're looking at 1,100 more laptops being distributed?
Well, I, when we ordered them in July, we were given an estimate of October 13th for when they would actually appear. They are here now, and we're getting, we're in the implementation phase of getting them ready for an October deployment. We're probably three, four months out if we were to order 1,100 more. The, the product that Dell has, the Dell Chromebooks, is more successful than they anticipated, and they've even taken them off of the consumer sales radar. So an individual couldn't go to Dell and purchase the Chromebook, they have a moratorium on purchases purely for education at this point. So it would be three, it would probably be January before we would start seeing inventory if we were to move ahead with the rest of the machines.
And then after that point, I mean, do you envision actually being able to distribute 1,100 more computers by February, or is it really before the end of the school year and the year is over?
At that point, for our seniors, it's, you know, we are halfway, the end of the term is the end of January, end of the first semester. That will probably be the timeframe. If it were to happen, we would have to, we would roll, I would assume that we would continue to roll ahead with our ninth grade, and then we would roll out subsequent classes, probably by grade level or by class, however, we, you know, would be more efficient. And probably February would be the time for that.
I guess, I mean, I have the impression that this would be an overwhelming task to distribute 1,100 more laptops, not only to the students, but with what you said about the training of the teachers, that that could be an overwhelming challenge too for addition.
We have a very thoughtful process. We have a steering committee of our teachers at the senior high school. We, we basically offered it to our staff as an opportunity after the, you know, after hours, for them to participate and help us write the handbook, to write the policies, you know, how we'll deal with discipline, and how we'll deal with, you know, batteries not being charged, and how we'll handle all of those, those things. And our teachers are doing a great job. How many people are on the committee?
Twenty.
Twenty, so that's, you know, a fifth of our teachers have volunteered to be on this committee. And we met last week, we didn't say anything about rolling to the entire, to the entire building, because really, that would have distracted them from, from the progress that we were making. I think it'd be very difficult. Even though we're training, our approach is to train the whole building, and that by department, they're, they're looking to those ninth grade teachers as, for the second round of training. So the whole English department is going to be at all of the one-to-one trainings, but the teachers who are specifically doing the one-to-one this year, we're going to ask them to help us provide whatever professional development for the remainder of the teachers. So it's really a train-the-trainer model, and only through going through it will we really know what we need to know to be successful.
Thanks. Well, have you envisioned what it would look like three years from now, going year by year with each of the grade levels, what the staffing requirements of your department would be just to maintain 1,300 computers?
I think the repair, and again, I said this in our curriculum meetings, our technology meetings, I think the day-to-day repair is not really the issue. We have a large number of machines in the district. We have over, you know, 2,500 computers. So having 1,100 machines that are in the students' hands, or 1,300, or 1,500, you know, it just changes our model a little bit, where we would have loners for the students to sign out when there was break fix, you know. Dell was very nice in giving us, all of my staff now are certified to do repairs, so we will actually be able to diagnose the problem, order the part, have the part come, and actually get a stipend from Dell for providing the service. I don't see any for additional break fix staff, my technicians, my building aides, my first level tech support. We plan on building out a student team of helpers to help us kind of do some of that front-end support. But, you know, I've said for years, we've talked about the one-to-one, a one-to-one is really about professional development. And really, to make it successful, you really need to have the resources for the teachers. And Dan is doing a great job of working with the staff, but he's, also has, you know, K-6 teachers, who are doing iPads. So really, to get this whole thing ramped up, you know, the instructional technology component is real important, and, you know, I would envision that there, you know, I would plan on putting a request in for additional instructional staff, being a teacher on special assignment for a couple of years, to help them to, you know, ramp up our professional development. Once we get to that point that everyone has them, we're just dealing with the incoming ninth graders, and just dealing with the maintenance of our, of our professional development, working with our teachers, you know, refining, and as things change, like, we're using MyBigCampus, or we're using Google Docs, just providing the training, the additional, the care and feeding, really, for the teachers as much as the care and feeding for the equipment. So the equipment is really the technical, I have enough staff for that. But really, it's professional development, and that's a real important part of it as well.
My last question is more financial, is the way this was posed to us is sort of a four-year lifespan of the Chromebooks. So to me, if we're going to spend more than a half million dollars this year on Chromebooks that may have a lifespan of four years, that means that in four years, we'll be back to buying another half a million dollars worth of Chromebooks. If you ever take the increase or decrease.
And that's, that's really why the plan is a phased plan, so that when we're doing just our eighth grader, eighth graders coming into nine, we're not dealing with that. You know, we have, we've had for, for our desktops, we've had a six to seven, maybe eight-year lifespan of some of the equipment, and, and it's too long, really, for some of the things that we have sitting around that we've just recently replaced, some of those life expectancies, just, they were here too long. I don't think it's too much to expect that a Chromebook would last four years. Districts like Coates Town, Ole, you know, they're providing $1,300 laptops to their students, and then they're cycling them on, on a four-year cycle as well. We were very thoughtful in, you know, what does the equipment need to look like? And the beauty of the Chromebook, and I know it's a, the Chromebook is $275, plus the licensing of the tracking software for us, you know, for what we're getting out of that, that is a very, very good cost compared to that $1,300, $1,200 full-featured laptop. But again, it is something that we want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're building that funding for, and that we have, you know, as our freshmen enter, where we know that every year now, we'll have $125,000 worth of equipment, roughly, that we're cycling in for the student population. And like I said, I'm not really sure what year five would look like. So if year five is still a viable year, you know, we either recycle it, we push it down, we do a lot of, where stuff, you know, flows down to the lower grades, or we do opt to sell it. You know, there's a possibility, I know that when Coates Town ended their first one-to-one, they did offer them to the students at a lower cost, and they used the money to purchase to cycle back into the lease for year five. So there are a lot of little things like that we'll need to address with what the end of the term of the lease would look like, or the end of the term would look like, but, you know, I think sustainability of the project depends on making sure that we, if we feel it's important, that we continue to fund it.
Joe, I, may I have a question? Thank you, sir. I like the concept of the one-to-one. I'm wondering about the fact we're not going to get the next shipment really into the hands of students until January, February. We really only have three or four more stuff this school year. Would it be better to know that we were going to get those books, those laptops, whatever it's called, in our hands in July or August, knowing the day one that student walks in, we hand them that next year? But also, at the same time, it helps us budget-wise, you know, to know where we're at. Because I think that this year was, it was a good goal to get us all, get us all set up, and knowing that we at least anticipated next year, we're going to have fixed costs coming in. But I think this year, knowing we're not going to necessarily get a full year of usage by our students in there, I'm not sure if that's really going to give us as much as we wanted there. At least, that's how I feel about it. Especially if I have that freshman's coming in next year, who says, why am I getting one off a senior, versus everybody got, there's all new, and four years from now, then we have a student saying, but guess what? But then, that's how life goes. It's just my feelings, and I think by that point in the year, that student has figured out how to get their homework done, or to get their projects done, and it gives us a little bit more learning curve also, to get ourselves totally functioning there, even though we know our teachers aren't ready to go. It just gives a little bit more.
Yes. I'm going to be voting against this motion, and it's not that I do not support the one-to-one initiative. I believe the original plan where we phased it in was a much more viable plan that optimized the technology's chances for success. And whether you think you're staffed or not, my opinion is that you're not that well-staffed, and that you can't pull this off. And that every time I've seen a technology initiative fail, when I was a teacher, was because the staff development was not intense enough, and was not enough support available for the teachers. I do not want that to happen. I think the first plan was well thought out, I think we need to continue to stick with that plan, let's roll it out with the ninth graders this year, and let's see how it goes. But that, to me, is a more measured, more calculated, and more of a plan that optimizes the success for both our students and our staff members working with a new piece of technology.
I'd like to answer a question, Joe.
Chair recognizes this speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. How many computers are up at the high school presently? Like, that students can use laptops, you know, laptops or whatever? Not, not.
I would say 1,100 in the building.
So there's no, no student in the high school that would not be able to use a computer within 10, 11, or 12?
Oh, there are plenty of facilities. I mean, we, we have labs, we have lab carts, we, how many lab carts?
Fifteen.
We have 15 lab carts, we have three fixed labs, we have a library full of equipment, we have targeted labs in graphic arts, STEM, music, TV studios. So there is, there is technology. And the plan, obviously, is once we would move to that second year, some of those facilities would be consumed, we would eliminate them, so we wouldn't need to have all of the fixed labs. So some of those labs will be converted into possible STEM, future STEM labs. Some of them will be converted to classrooms, because, you know, we would have the ability to, to use some of those classrooms to make new classrooms. The mobile carts that are there will trickle, we'll push those down to the junior high in fifth and sixth grade, and really have more availability of those resources. So it's not that this year, those students would not have access to the technology that they've had before. And those students that do exist in classrooms, that do have classes with ninth graders or primarily ninth grade, our plan is to outfit those rooms with machines, so that during the lesson, during the planning, they will be able to do, keep up with their peers, their ninth grade partners in the classroom. The only, the only issue would be, when those students are home, we would need to be sensitive to the fact that, do they? the fact that, do they have equipment, do they not have equipment? And those are discussions that we're having with the teachers in ninth grade to figure out, how do we, how do we handle the students who don't have internet? How do we handle the students who don't have technology? What if we give them this device, they go home and they don't have internet, or they live in a spot where there's no coverage, or their Wi-Fi's down? Those are the procedures, the administrative things, that we just have to kind of, kind of deal with. But yeah, there's, there's, it's not like we're taking technology and giving it to the ninth graders, we're giving them the technology and keeping the other stuff there for this period of time.
So then it would probably be a nine-year, you know, ninth, 10, 11, 12 grade this year, and then, you know, try to figure out who has the internet, who doesn't?
It would. I mean, it would, how, we would have so much technology, there really would need to start trickling, pushing, moving, it would just be a lot of administrative coordination that, you know, not that we couldn't do it, it would just be a big distraction.
Sure. I think this is a classic example of prioritization of resources. This initiative, which I strongly support, and have strongly supported from the beginning, would enhance the quality of the educational experience for all the Exeter students. I always viewed it as a tool for the student. I never wanted to come at it from the teacher-development side. My argument from the beginning, and I think the way the student would best use this, as a tool to do the research that they can do at home, to write the term paper that they can do at home. My kids were classic examples of people who told me about some of the gymnastics that some of the other students had to go through that didn't have technology. This is going to level the playing field. One of the other things I think we've got to consider is that we not only budgeted for in the operating budget, but we took a three-year reserve for this. So in essence, we have already paid for it from a bottom-line standpoint. And again, I understand that you want to bring the teacher-development side into this, but I simply view it as a tool that when you give it to the students, it's going to expand their universe of what they can do, both in the classroom and outside the classroom, and I can't be more strongly in favor of it.
All in favor of purchasing the additional 1,100 Chromebooks this year? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion is declined.
I move that the Board of School Directors approves one of the following student participation cost options as part of the one-to-one computer laptop program. Number one, no upfront fee, first-time incident responsible for cost of repair up to $50. Second incident cost of repair up to $100. Third incident cost of repair replacement not to exceed $275. Four, fee to participate at $10 a year that covers up to three incidents over four years. Additional incident will be assessed at a value of the repair.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Question. And my question, are we voting on either or, is this the, or this is the parent option?
No, this is the board's option. Which one, which structure will we use?
See, I actually would prefer to, I would actually prefer to see us use both of these, and have, view the $10 as, almost as like us selling insurance on the computer, of protecting those, of the parent and the family being protected from a larger cost, and have it be their option. If they feel that they can self-insure for the larger cost, with like the second scenario, then why not give them this choice upfront?
And I guess we have three options.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion.
And my suggestion would be a fourth option, which I don't understand where the other parts of this motion came in. I say no upfront fees. Once again, I think it is just layering on fees and assessments on top of the students and their parents, above and beyond what they already pay in taxes. I think if this is going to be a tool that we provide for them, there's no technology fee, there's no fee, and we just simply go with it.
I agree with that. I do agree that it's, again, I'm just saying, because we now have a tremendous amount of computers up there, that to my knowledge, we're not charging them any type of an upfront fee, are we?
They don't take them out of the school.
I understand. But I'm just asking.
No.
Okay. So we have no technology fee now, so...
The purpose of this, and there is research out there on schools that have done the one-to-one, and when there is no consequence for loss or damage, the student, some of the students, not all of them, the majority will probably do well, and will be responsible, but some of the students will not take care of it, and we will just keep giving the student another computer, another computer, another computer, if they keep losing, misplacing, whatever. If there is nothing in place that holds some accountability with the student, that's just, you know, the smart way to do things. The kids that are responsible are not going to, at least, the most they would pay is $10, and, you know, if they, if, let's say you gave them a choice like Russ suggested, if they chose the no upfront fee, if they're careful with the computer and treat it as we would treat it, then there's not going to be a cost to them. We're not layering on a cost, we're just not going to keep replacing and replacing and replacing for kids who just don't treat it properly. And there will be a small number of kids who will do that, if there are no consequences. They may still do that, but at least we can try to recoup some of the loss.
Well, just, just real quick, I just, I multiply 10 times 350, and it's $3,500. I know the amount of money we pay on insurance policies right now. I just look at that as almost, I think, that we should just pay the fee and self-insure.
Well, that's what we would be doing.
Okay, so we would not be charging them?
No, I mean, that we would be self-insuring, whether we pay the fee or they pay the fee, I guess it's for the board to decide. Joe, what are your thoughts?
Well, I spoke to a couple of districts to figure out what their damage, their actual yearly damage was, and it was relatively low, and the parts that were damaged, you know, our screens, that's the biggest damage. We spoke to a couple of parents, and they were, they were thrilled with the idea of $10 kind of accidental insurance kind of program, and that's really the intent, you know, and I'm, I'm on the fence about, you know, do we charge a fee, you know, do we, you know, like I've said in the past, you know, I get a letter in August every year about what supplies I need to provide my son for school, you know, $35, $40. So to pay a $10 fee that would, you know, cover those accidental damages, you know, the machine falls off the desk, or it's in a bag, and we are providing a very nice bag that will provide a level of protection. I do like Mr. Disinger's idea of both of them. You know, we have always kind of thought either-or, you know, what would it be like to have, you know, if you opted into the insurance, or if you, you know, didn't opt into it? And not opting into it would put you in the deductible, the 50, you know, cost deductible, and otherwise, the $10 would be, basically, we're talking about a pool, just using that pool to cover the damage fees, and not really, you know, use district funding to do that. I've spoken, like I said, I've spoken to other districts, I've, it ranges from $10 to $55, to actually, to $65 in this county alone, and what the fees are. So it's a wide range. Again, the machines that they're being offered, some of those districts are giving $1,300 machines, and you have a $65 yearly technology fee, as well as you pay for broken parts in some of those situations. And Ole has a detailed, you know, schedule for, well, how much a screen would cost, and how much a drive would cost, and how much the keyboard would cost. Our idea is not to, you know, create another layer of administration, it's to provide a level of insurance, because one of the things we learned, we had a very small pilot last year with, in the senior high school of 20 students, and one of the frustrations was, the students, those parents were fearful of, you know, bringing the machine home. You know, what about on the bus, or what about, you know, what if it gets broken? What am I going to be responsible for? We were very clear with them that this was a learning process for us to figure out, and if we, we didn't have any damage with that pilot group, but those folks, you know, would most likely be more comfortable, you know, doing the $10 fee for insurance.
Just a couple of things. I mean, I appreciate the work that's gone into getting us this far, and I wish that this first motion would have been something that we could have addressed a year ago, because I thought it would have been a great idea to do it all in one fell swoop. I like the option of a no upfront fee, because there's no barrier to entry for anybody. You're just, you're included in the program. I'd even add a mulligan to number one, so if somebody screws up the first time, drops their computer, or whatever, we'll give them a, you know, look, that's, that can happen. But I do like the fact that there is some sort of responsibility on the students' end to take care of the machine. I think it's another part of learning into the education process. And I also like that if we don't try to collect upfront, we don't have to put an administrative collection process in place to make sure that we're getting that money and having that money, and as Joe said, I mean, it's almost negligible at $300, at $3,500.
Yeah, actually, two other comments. First, I think it's important that people are invested in pride. If they're invested in something and they have a responsibility to it, it will help them to take better care of it. So that's a plus. I also think that $10 for some families, and you just heard what Joe was talking about, parents worried about them on the bus, parents worried about this, the $10, if we sell it as an insurance policy, ensures them that there is no financial obligation for it. So that's their choice. If somebody says, "You know what, the $10 is just $10 for you to collect, because my kid's going to take care of that and never do anything wrong", they can have that option.
The only thing I don't like about the choice is that now we have to keep track of which kid paid the $10, if that's the only thing.
Well, you're going to have to keep track of who paid the $10, then, if you're collecting.
As the motion is...
Yeah, but in the end, we know that they all have given it.
As the motion is written right now, it does not satisfy any criteria that the boys have put forward. I will entertain a motion to indicate that this is an inclusive thing, that they can do either or, that they have an option of choosing either of these plans. And I think that would modify the motion to, then, if you are so inclined as to not charge any fee, you would vote against this motion.
I'll say it.
We'll be motion to modify it to indicate a choice. Right on the second. A motion second. All in favor of modifying the motion to indicate a choice? I'm sorry, discussion?
No, I don't have discussion. You just explain what we're, what a yes vote means.
Okay, right now, a yes vote will mean that the basic proposal is modified to indicate that a student will have a choice of number one and number two, not number one or, you have, you will have a choice between the two. So we are voting only on the modification of the proposal at this moment.
So if we don't like that option, then, and that modification doesn't pass, then can we go back to splitting up and vote on the motion with pay, with number one and the motion number two? So that's what that means, if we, if we vote no on this, is that we don't agree?
It means that now, if I make you happy, girl. If I make you happy, that's what it means now. All in favor of modifying the motion to allow a choice of one or two? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So I've got one, two, three against, and six, four. Now, we are voting on the basic proposal of a charge. If you vote yes, the students will have the option of either the $10 insurance fee or the payment on a breakage basis. If you vote no, we will not be charging a fee. Do you have further discussion?
I just had one more question. I never got to ask my question of Mr. Wood. Could you define what an incident is, and is there a grace period when they first get it, like, first day or two, they find, they get it home, it doesn't charge, the switches don't work, something's failed up in there?
Did you get the full attachments? There should be two, did we give them?
Just the two pages, any of B.
So there should be two that list the exceptions and...
Yeah, exclusions are at the bottom of the...
Yes.
This, this doesn't cover warranty damage, or this will cover, if there is a problem, a defect with the equipment, this has nothing to do with it.
Oh, yeah.
We're fully covered for that, and that has nothing, no bearing on the student or anything, that's, that's fixed by us. So if it, if they get it and the screen comes out of the box broke, or the keyboard is defective, that's, has nothing to do with this at all.
Any further discussion?
I don't understand that question. I'm not going to be voting, but I just, I don't understand.
Well, I'm about to explain, I'm about to explain again. We're about to vote on this motion, which will allow a student to either pay on a per-damage basis, on a sliding scale of 50, 100, and 275, for the third time he has damaged his computer, or he may spend $10 at the beginning of his high school career and be covered for up to three incidents for the four years. That is the option that the child shall have. If you vote in favor, the child will have that option. If you vote against this motion, we will not be charging any upfront fee or any damage assessment. Is the, is it clear?
Okay. Unless there's no option, then they go on to, okay, we're just going to do number one, or we're just going to do number two.
I will always accept the motion from my contemporaries.
Actually, Bob, if number two is they pay $10 each year.
Three incidents over four years.
No. $10 per year. $10 per year.
Okay, sorry about that, I misinterpreted.
This vote covers, they have an option.
Is this vote, all right?
That's a yes vote, right?
If you vote yes, this will be carried, and they have an option. If you vote no, there is no fee levied on having the computer, we are providing it just as we would any other educational machine.
Computer, watch closely, see, tell me which one the P is on.
All in favor of the motion to provide these optional breakage coverage? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Therefore, they will have this.
One last thing before I turn it over to Dr. Bender. On October 6th, I will be in front of the House Education Department, talking about the Financial Literacy Task Force Report, so we're going to have an opportunity to plead our case, and hopefully, we will see some, have some additional information about financial literacy as part of our curriculum generally.
It's not the run fund, maybe. Congratulations, it's your help.
Hey, we couldn't figure out $10 is zero, we need financial literacy.
Dr. Bender, first note, please.
I move the Board of School Directors to accept the following resignations, listed under Part A, number one. We have Items A and B under support status.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve the appointment of a certificated staff at A Cemic, Part B, number one, letter A.
Motion second, discussion.
This was an emergency hire?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a double teaching lab, we've been in... We've been about to found it already since the start of school.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, the substitute teachers, I'm going to divide into two parts. My first motion is that the Board approve the list of substitute teachers of certified teachers.
Motion second. Discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve the substitute teacher roster of guest teachers.
Motion second. Discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve the appointments of the following support staff. List under Part B, number three, ex-Pickler staff, number four, and school health services, number five.
Motion second. Discussion?
I'm going to be recommending that the Board not vote in favor of this. And the reason is that I think we have gotten our prior, our process out of whack, especially with number five. I know none of these two individuals. However, I think that the Board needed to approve their hiring before they were hired for the 2014-2015 school year. And I see that we've actually even paid one of them already, which I think is in clear violation of Pennsylvania Municipal Code.
Can you comment on that?
Well, I, I do not know if this, these people have been appointed last year, this year, or whether they are continuing bases. If, in fact, they're new appointees, it would be premature to pay them.
They're not new appointees, but they're renewed every year.
Okay.
And to my knowledge, and perhaps I'm wrong, since Dr. Terera seemed to have discovered something otherwise in billing, I believe, they have not, they have not begun their work for this year.
Correct. Something may have been paid from a late bill turned in from 13, 14.
But that would have been from the prior school year. So while it may appear, because it says 14, 15 school year, that we're approving after the start of the 14, 15 school year, in fact, the doctor and the dentist have not begun to do their work in this school year.
So then he paid for past services rather than they were appointed?
That's what I would assume, because I know of no circumstance where either of these physicians have worked for us this year.
But I think that when they are being hired, whether it is a yearly hiring, because we were given the op, we're given the option of hiring new people, I think that that hire has to come before the Board first. And I think that we've gotten the process in reverse.
If the Board does not wish to approve these two individuals, we could still hire different people. And we will let these people know that we're not going to be renewed for this year. So there still is that opportunity, because they have not begun working yet, and we have not notified them of their renewal.
We have not, but I would just say, these gentlemen have done a service to this district for years, and now we're going to say, because they weren't approved in August, we don't want to use them anymore? These are community people who have helped us.
I'm just saying to Dr. Terera's point...
I realize what you're saying.
That we are not, we have not really, in effect, hired them yet.
Mr. Kramer, let me just, let me address your point. I stand with the Pennsylvania Municipal Code behind me and the Department of Education behind me. That was a rule in code. I can't pick and choose, as a school board member, which ones I want to abide by and which ones I don't. And you can't either.
Well, I'm not, I'm not understanding the issue here. I mean, we always appoint these people, and is your concern that we haven't done a preapproval before we put them on the agenda?
No. My, my point is that we should have had these people on the agenda, say, in June or July, before the school year started, before that we made the appointment.
Before, before the times were served.
Yes.
We'd come up. Well, that, that does make sense, but if, in fact, we don't have them appointed timely, we've got to get them appointed as soon as we can, so we do have someone in place, whether it be these individuals or someone else.
All I'm asking is that they would have been brought up for approval in June or July per code.
May I ask a question? At this point, have either individual provided service for the school district this year? At this point, may I request that next August, we'll have the individuals who will be serving these roles put before the Board for approval. At this point, I'd like to move this motion ahead.
I'd just like to ask a question, Bob. What is the process that we go through to select the physician?
The question has been called. I will allow discussion of this here to vote, but considering the procedures, we will move this to a vote and then discuss your question. All in favor of appointing Dr. Gibbons and Dr. Reiniger, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
I assume abstaining.
We have two abstentions, so it's seven, zero, two. Now, any question again?
I just was, just trying to get an understanding of, there are 850 physicians in this county.
How are these originally selected?
Yeah, just, I mean, how do, how do we go through, like, how do we hire them? What's it based on? And what is the service provided?
Well, Don has been working with our health service folks for some years now, so perhaps you have that history of knowing how these gentlemen became appointed in the first place?
We basically have always tried to select a dentist and a doctor from the school district, not that it has to be.
From the community.
Usually, the person was reappointed year after year unless they said they didn't want to do it anymore. And then we went out and tried to find a doctor or a dentist who was willing to do it. Because they're basically doing the public service. They're not making any money on $10 a physical and $3 a dental exam. They're donating time.
It is my recollection of times when we couldn't find people to do this, because there's no real money.
And I would guess that the only reason that, these come up annually, and I know what my secretary does, she looks at what are, you know, some of the appointments that are usually done at this time of the year, and then they recur, why this got to be in September and not in July. I don't think there is any particular reason for it. So I will be sure to move this up to the July agenda after...
We'll move forward, and Dr. Terera's point is taken, however, since they have not performed any services, I don't consider us to have been guilty of, what do they call that?
Malfeasance.
No, not malfeasance. If you spend money without proper authority, then you are in violation of law. Since we have not paid any fees to these gentlemen, I do not feel that we are violating law, but I think your advice...
Can we approve the other positions there? I was just curious of what the Emergency Services Club does.
Um, it's a high school club. I think it used to be only, you know, like EMS, or was it firefighters?
Both.
Volunteer firefighters and EMS, kids who want to be involved with those organizations.
I just have a question about, why do we just do it on a year-to-year basis if we had these people working? How many years have they been working here?
I would have, I would have to look. Dr. Gibbons has probably been the physician for the last five years. Dr. Cole was the physician prior to that. He couldn't do it anymore because of time commitment. Dr. Reiniger has probably been for 10 or 12 years, a dentist, probably longer than that.
Is there something in this school column that you have to do it?
It provides the school district with the flexibility. For instance, if a physician did not perform to our expectations and had not been, and can now, and since he is only hired for the specific year, we would not have to, certainly if it was a serious problem, you know, we would discharge or we would relieve him of the appointment. But if it's just a matter of cooperation, if the person does not perform well, we don't have to have him. We can hire someone else in the hopes that we'll get better performance out of it. I don't like evergreen contracts, quite frankly.
Well, we don't hire teachers on a year-to-year basis, or we don't hire our student candidates.
I'll see that that's put on next, but I'm suggesting...
But Pat, we do hire our solicitor, so it's, it's not unusual to treat professional...
Professional services.
I'm a professional. That's all, I'm a professional. Doesn't it help talk to your professor?
Dr. Bender, if you would like to continue?
I move the Board of School Directors to approve the leave of absence for Kyle F. Luckinville.
Motion second. Discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve the following resolution. Whereas in accordance with the opinion of the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania, number 240, CD 2013, and the order of the Court of Common Pleas dated July 21st, 2014, in case 2012-26282, the Board of Directors and the Joseph Cambria termination as head girls' basketball coach matter, has reweighed the evidence presented at December 11th, 2012 local agency hearing, discarding the hearsay testimony, and in April 2011 letter. Therefore, based on the Board's reviewing of the evidence, it is hereby resolved in accordance with Section 514 of the School Code, that the Board of School Directors of the Exeter Township School District terminates Joseph C. Cambria as the head girls' basketball coach for the 2012-2013 school year.
Motion second. I would like to put a qualification on voting on this particular motion. Dr. Terera, and Mike, we're not involved in this original vote. While you have the authority as a member of this Board to vote, you are not required to, your vote will not be registered if you did not elect you in her honor. May I have an indication whether you're going to vote or not?
No.
Therefore, the, we have a...
It would be listed as an extension.
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I, I did not support this termination at the time that we voted on it the first time, and I will not be supporting it again. In fact, I find it really difficult. It was difficult to support the first time when we were permitted to hear the hearsay evidence. Now there doesn't seem to be any evidence at all, and we're still going to terminate this guy. But I'm going to vote no, thanks.
I will also be voting no on this issue. I voted no originally, and now that there's no hearsay evidence at all that we needed to listen to, I will also be voting no.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's five, two.
Five, three.
Five, three, I'm sorry.
Four, three. Oh, no, four, one.
You're favoring, you're favoring the termination.
No. We're, we're against the termination.
No, it's favoring the, favoring the termination.
I think it was Pat, me, Jim, who were against the termination.
Motion carries. Four to three.
Do you want to hand, hand vote?
I'd like to have a...
Do we need a hand vote for that?
Yeah, either that or one of the other.
Vot come.
So if you vote yes, you're favoring to terminate, correct?
Correct.
Vot all in this section.
Mrs. Peja?
Yes.
Mr. Staub?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gibbons?
Yes.
Dr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
No.
Mr. Decenber?
No.
Mrs. Gutcher?
Yes.
So, I'm going to take four yeses.
Motion carries. Four, three.
I move the Board of School Directors to approve the following staff conferences. List under Party number one through 13.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion?
I'd like to request that we move 10 and 11 to a separate vote, please.
Shall be so. Any further discussion?
Just considering the first line.
Nine and 12.
It'll be nine and...
What, you, you have it to be separate?
No.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion on any of these items? Hearing none. All in favor of approving subpar paragraphs one through nine, 12, and 13. Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those are approved. Looking at subpar paragraphs 10 and 11. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. All right.
Yeah, first question I have is on number 10. Where is the conference located?
I'm looking.
Hershey. Is it an over, is it something that's running late into the evening? Is there a reason we need to have someone getting paid to stay overnight? And we have two people going to that particular conference. Could they have carpool together?
I think they needed to go separately, and I forget the reason, but there was a legitimate reason. I think it's the, the location of the, where the two employees live.
According to number 11, with the extra funds that are available through the food services, and considering that they run as their own separate entity at times, and they decided this year they would run it in deficit because of the way they wanted to run their operation, I request that Gloria Clay's fee for her conference be picked up out of her own budget.
It is. And it's okay.
Okay, because it's not indicating...
Any further discussion?
What is the reason why? Hershey is only about 35 minutes from here. What is the reason?
No, it's about...
Are you flying?
Fifty-five minutes.
I'm going to do it next time.
I'm going with it.
You know, I'm a veteran.
I can assure you.
We're late to that meeting in Hershey, we were at.
I was just up there.
Thirty minutes.
It's not that long. But I, I don't understand why we have to stay over if we're lodging, even if it's 50 minutes. That's only 50. I mean, some people drive 50 minutes to work here, I'm sure, every day.
Sometimes there are evening sessions or evening activities associated with the, with the, with the conference that you want to stay.
Yeah, there, there are some sessions that occur over the dinner hour and afterwards, and the sessions also begins, I believe, somewhere around 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning.
I think once, once you recognize the reimbursement for mileage, if they're going back and forth, I don't think there's any difference.
Well, well, it's $208 now. That's a lot of money. I, I can't, I can't believe it's going to cost...
It's actually not a deep transportation.
It says $208.
$208.
Oh, I thought you said Gloria. I'm sorry, I thought you...
That's because they need to drive separately. So there's two people driving, and it would be that much more if a total cost for, for one person for three days, another person for two days of $800. It's not out of range for a conference such as this.
No, I'm talking about the transportation. It's a hundred, hundred, $104 round trip.
Unless we want to provide with commercial transportation, we cannot require any private individual to transport any other individual, and there are...
I think what Pat is getting at, if we're saying that the distance is roughly maybe 120 mile round trip, and the standard rate now is about 56.5 cents per mile, at $104 per person, that's larger than this guy's debate.
If you pay tolls, if you... Hey, 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 wait a minute. Unless someone has an objection, a specific objection to one of these charges, I suggest that we vote on this and determine whether we're going to allow the people to vote.
Yes.
Is there any objection? All in favor of items ten and eleven, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have one in opposition. Thank you, Dr.
Oh, never mind.
That completes personnel.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Kurtz.
May I address the board briefly?
Please.
Although a four to three vote is sufficient under law to terminate, we have a policy that requires five votes to terminate a non-tenured employee, so the resolution, although it apparently passed, did not pass under our own rule of operations, or policy prohibits, so that will be the effect of the vote will be insufficient to terminate. Everyone understand?
Do you have a solution to this problem, Mr. Penner?
Change your policy.
Change your policy, but it's a little bit late, you know? You can't change your policy now. The only way that that could be handled is there could be a reconsideration, but that would have to be, well, could be brought up by the prevailing party, how to vote to reconsider, and if you get five votes the next time, then it would work, but that's about the only way you can proceed to pass on the resolution.
And I'll rephrase my question. Do you have a suggestion as to what this board should do?
Well, I prosecuted the case, and I've always recommended the termination, so I mean, and that's why I'm not involved in the decision-making process or the resolution.
I mean, not so far as a decision, but what can we do to remedy the quandary we happen to be in right now? There were only seven people aboard who were eligible to vote, and we did not satisfy our local procedures, but it is legal under law. Would you recommend that I query the board as to whether we will set aside our policy for this particular question, or?
No, I don't think you do that. I mean, I think you have to live with what has happened, and that's just the way it goes.
So you're just giving me something that I lose sleep over today, Chris.
Well, I hear John also say that one of the four who voted in favor could bring the motion up again.
Could bring the motion back up, and if you got a five-person vote, then you'd have, then you'd be sufficient that time, but that's about the only way that I can see.
John, my understanding was that for this particular position, it did not require five.
It does not accept our policy does require. Unfortunately, policy six does require.
Is policy six for all employees, or is it just for professional employees?
Yeah.
What, what?
The other attorney involved did not say that.
It says non-tenured. Does it mean just teachers or just certified people?
Well, since teachers are the only ones who gain things, it would seem to make sense.
Would somebody get the policy and rate of course?
Or does it mean all, all others?
We have it here, and it says, "Following actions require the recorded affirmative vote of a majority of the full number of board members." That's five, okay? And then section eighteen says, "Dismissing after appearing a non-tenured employee," and it cites section 514, which is what covers non-professional employees, and it cites 1080, which would cover administrative employees. I think superintendent's, no, not superintendent.
Yeah. One question I have, John, is that when the other attorney met with us to review the case, after we went through the court proceedings, he specifically pointed out the fact that it would really only be those individuals who were initially involved, and if it really involved Mr. Japina or Dr. Tumora at that point, it would be excluded.
They did not have to be excluded. Well, what advice you're getting from him, you have to follow. All I can say is that he certainly wouldn't have been familiar with our policy manual. You wouldn't expect that because he's not a local counsel.
Is the rule that an abstention actually goes with a majority of the vote?
An abstention really just gives you the vote, a quorum, will give you a quorum. But I think that the problem we have is with the policy, and I can say, were we operating under the common law, there would be no doubt that the four to three vote would be sufficient
And that does not supersede our policy?
My opinion would be that if we have a policy, we may make it more restrictive, and that we would have to follow the policy if it needs to be more restrictive.
I'm just not sure if that... Non-professional employee, at least in my school experience, has always, has always referred to non, excuse me, to non-tenured teachers. The others are just, you know, this is, this is what's, I mean, it's extracurricular, sorry.
But it's, it's part of the professional...
Bargaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's my opinion, but, you know, I would like to see it otherwise, too, because I was an advocate for the other position.
Well, what happens if it remains a four to three vote?
Then it's not effective to terminate. It's not sufficient to terminate. You should do five votes.
So then he would, okay.
For that, for that year.
For that year, he would, he would be entitled to, uh...
He's paid.
Paid.
Then it would have to be higher than...
Take the voteless stand, and if we had to pay, we'd pay.
We actually have no way out of this, even if we voted five to one. Can I address something else?
I think he's going to win. If the court was defensive on one of them, we'd worry.
Just to address Jim's earlier question about the special ed supervisors going to Hershey, I actually have an answer for the transportation question. And looking at the applications more closely, Mrs. Barna, who's only going for two days, is going to be traveling back and forth. So she bears the larger cost of transportation, an estimated one hundred and forty-three dollars from where she lives, but she has no, no charges for room. However, the, all the charges for room are for the three days that Dr. Miller is attending, and then her transportation costs is only for one round trip at approximately sixty dollars. So, and look at it that way, it makes more sense.
What is, just under, under Barna, it says lodging, four hundred and fifty dollars?
No, that's a combined...
It's a total for that.
Yeah, that's combined for the two...
But she's not staying.
Supervisors. So Mrs. Barna's going to drive back and forth, so she has a larger cost of transportation, but no cost for room. I thought four hundred and fifty dollars would be the goal for two people if they were having two separate rooms.
Who is this? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Okay.
Will you move on to the function?
Just to clarify.
Okay.
Just reporting item A, the field trips within the sixty-mile radius, it's one through nine, and I would like to comment, item two, the, it doesn't, the Exeter Community Education Foundation is going to contribute to the expense of this particular trip.
Do I have a second?
No, I don't need a second because...
Oh, she needs a second.
So I'd be...
Carol, could you use your little machine here?
I know that the following field trips, which are beyond a sixty-mile radius, be approved, items one through, item B, one through three?
I'd like to ask that we vote on number three separately.
We have a second to vote on all three, and I will put number B three as a separate vote. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor approving items B one and two, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you want me to repeat this, or just we're moving to item three?
No, we're moving on to item B three. I'll allow the reason why we're considering discussion here.
Yeah, well, yes, I'm going to vote against number three, because I don't feel that the sports participation is justification in this, the school day.
Party is off. What time we leaving on Thursday?
It works out to be a day and a half altogether in this school.
All right, now, we're now considering item B three. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize. I am mic open quarter to snow.
No, we heard your voice.
Getting paid, just moving on.
You're getting old.
It's getting late.
Okay, all right. Hush up, guys, because I'm going to giggle through this. Now it's going to be worse. I move that the board approves an agreement with the Justicating Immediate Unit for Services to be rendered by the Readyline Virtual Academy for full-service online courses and computer technology management, August 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
Second.
I have motion, second discussion.
Have any of these fees been paid?
No. Not for this school year.
I'll vote reluctantly in favor of this, but I am concerned that we see the contract late, and as Dr. Barton informed us last year, it's actually more costly this year than previously.
It is by about thirty dollars per course, and the contract is on now because this is when they send out the contracts.
What's the total cost per? What percentage? You said it was thirty dollars. Thirty dollars on one.
Per course.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Was it a hundred dollars before, now a hundred thirty?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Five hundred and something compared to six hundred.
Three or four percent. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I can get to the exam.
And it's okay, man. I got it. Thanks.
All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, I move that the Board of Directors approves an Act 48 program placement agreement between Exeter Township School District and the Glenn Mills School for Alternative and Disruptive View for the 2014-15 school year at a tuition of a hundred and twenty-seven dollars per day.
Second. I have motion and second discussion.
Is there transportation costs in addition to this, do you know? Dr. Barnes?
I believe that is separate. Which one are we looking at though?
D.
Glenn Mills.
Glenn Mills. Yeah, that's just the daily, that's just the daily rate.
Okay.
And that's if we were to place a student there. We have the contract in case, in case the need arises.
Okay, so you, but you don't know what... Is Glenn Mills down south of Philadelphia?
Um, isn't, isn't that the one?
It's suburban Philadelphia.
Yeah.
It's south.
Or some...
It's still working.
Yeah, discussion.
They have a team that only travels in one.
Yeah, this is the daily rate. I don't know how much additional transportation would be. We're not...
Six hundred.
We don't, not currently, but we may in the future.
Six hundred by the way.
All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, I move that the Board of Directors approve a tuition agreement with Hogan Learning Academy, Al Al Sea, the Exeter Township School District, for special education services for student number 423091, beginning August 23rd, 2014, through the remainder of the 2014-15 school year, at a cost of three hundred and sixty-five dollars a day.
Second. I have motion and second discussion.
Question. What type of school is Hogan Learning Academy? Next question, where are they located, and what is their total cost of the three hundred and sixty-five dollars per day for an overall school?
It is a school for students with severe autism.
Okay.
And they are in Fleetwood.
Okay.
And what was your last question?
I guess then the overall fee somewhere in the fifty thousand dollar range.
Something like that, high for at least.
Okay.
Is this a new, do you know if this is a new placement?
Yes, this is the one we discussed last week.
I'm sorry, it wasn't...
Oh, I'm sorry. It is a new placement.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Directors approve a tuition agreement between Exeter Township School District and Children's Home of Reading Day Academy for educational counseling services for students for the 2014-15 school year, a cost of a hundred and fifty dollars a day for each special education student, and eighty-five dollars per day for each regular education student. For students who are attending Vo-Tech, the Career Tech Center, the cost is seventy-five dollars per day for each special education student, and forty-two dollars and fifty cents per day for each regular education student.
Second. I have motion and second discussion.
I have a question. Go ahead, man. I was just curious, how many kids? This effect? Because we're proving a dollar, we're proving the dollar figure times how many kids.
In other words, do we have any students enrolled in this program at the moment?
Well, do we have any students? We have a hundred kids. Like, I mean, it's just trying to get a gauge of what the dollar figure is.
Um, I am not sure if we have any kids in there at the moment. Do you happen to know if we're going there, or have any students?
The placements are very few there, and they may be there for just a short period of time, and it fluctuates.
Let me sort of like a placeholder if we have a need to...
Exactly. A lot of these are placeholders unless they're for specific students.
So, would these students attend the Reading Day Academy? I mean, how does, how do they provide their services?
I mean, is al patients or inpatients or... I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. I mean, we're...
Is the children's home providing the counselors for students in Vo-Tech who are to need a search counselor? What is...
I mean, we know from, say, Hogan, that children are going to go to the Hogan Learning Academy for the children's home or Reading Day Academy. Are our children from Exeter going to actually go there and read?
Yes, as far as I know.
The rest of the children's home?
Yes, it's, uh...
And that's where the academy is?
Very similar to the costs of other types of special ed placements or alternative placements. I'm reading the contract now just to see, and Dr. Miller and Mrs. Barna are not here this evening to, to ask about that. These are typically short-term placements for kids who experience severe mental health issues.
Oh, okay.
And they're typically, you know, small, you know, short-term, not typically like they would attend the entire year.
All right, thanks.
Further discussion or questions? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D. I move that the Board of Directors approve a tuition agreement with Pathway School and the Exeter Township School District for therapeutic academic program for student number 170114, beginning September 4th, 2014, through the remainder of 2014-15 school year, at a cost of forty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Second. I have motion and second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Dizzi.
Thank you. It is recommended that the, I move that the Board of School Directors approves the purchase of the following textbooks, succeeding in life and career and housing and interior design.
Second. I have motion and a second. These books have not been purchased since then. Discussion.
Same, same principle as, as before, I think.
I think it's a principle issue, it's not about the health providers or the textbooks, it's about the prioritization of where we are in the voting process. I think this should have been done much earlier, before these books were taken in possession, despite the fact that we haven't paid for them, I think we need to approve them first. So, I'm going to say that I'm recommending that we abstain from voting yes on this.
For the discussion.
Just curious, what's the reason that was delayed for books this year?
Two new classes, we, because the national rotation was split up last year, we were putting together different courses, these two courses were put together and put before the, the board through the curriculum meeting, I think it was back, we were in the staff development room, it was probably back in February, so the purchasing of the books didn't come through until, until now, they haven't gone to the board of course. I've talked to the teachers, I've talked to all the teachers about this, and now on they won't be, never going to see anything, any textbooks on the agenda after the June voting.
Typically, we have not allowed teachers to put a textbook before us past May, because we want the thirty days to have the textbook on display and then at the end of that have the board vote on it, and before July first, in time to order it with the new budget year, and then to have it in place before the students start at the end of August. So, there's our typical procedure, this, I agree with Dr. Tamura, the, this should have been done earlier, but if, you know, our apologies, it was, it's just, you know, one of those things that, you know, the teacher submitted, submitted it late, perhaps because the course was just in the process of being written, I don't know the circumstances, but we have, Dr. Davies has told the teachers, we will not be accepting them in the future after that certain date, so.
Mr. Sullister, could you give us your guidance on this?
Well, we have the books. The supplier shipped them prematurely, so they. I think that there are many times when we ratify events that, that happen because of necessity, and I strongly recommend we're doing the along creep, that we have an ability to pay things ahead of time and ratify later because it's necessary for the operation. And I think that we can work through ratification here to affect what the board's pressures.
For the discussion. All in favor, please indicate so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And I'm second. Motion carries. Mr. Trupina, take off, thank you, Mr. Dizzi.
Where to start? No, I haven't, I haven't covered it.
ECIU, here's a scoop for you, Dr. George is leaving effective tomorrow night, well, not effective tomorrow night, he will resign effective tonight.
Is he saying he's leaving already?
No, he's leaving October seventeenth, he will be replaced by Dr. Heckman, who is currently the assistant.
Will there be a search or is just, she's here?
We may or may not search for a new assistant, the.
Yeah, I was going to say the way I read the announcement, she's going to be.
She will be the replacement, and we may or may not search for an assistant, depend upon whether qualified applicants are available within.
Yeah, I knew that, so we're staying ready and driving up.
I think she'll do a great job, I miss Dr. George, and I think she'll do a great job.
Yeah.
Mr. Stopp.
We had a, we had an athletic committee meeting last night, did go over a lot of things, but the things we did do is we, we wanted to go over the facility rental schedule, and was kind enough to provide us with a lot of information comparing our facility rental schedule with other district, other schools in the district. We found out that we were, we are very competitive or on the high end with, with what we are charging the community, and like, for playoff games, things of that nature, we are going to recommend that there's going to be a slight change, just allowing an authorized superintendent, athletic director principal to set a rate if it's for, if they get a call for a PIA double, double A game or something like that, just to give them some flexibility, to bring in some additional revenue for us. And then the other thing that we talked about, and we'll bring further information to the board, is we're just looking at the potential to have someone come in and market and solicit for advertising. What we want to look at is potential naming rights, additional advertising revenue, because we feel there's a tremendous opportunity out there, we've been able to generate about forty thousand, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars in total since we started, just with banners, and we're having people come up and talk to us now. And as we started talking about the potential scoreboard and with electronic advertising, we feel now is the time to look at a potential professional to help us do this, similar to the booster clubs where they take a percentage, it would be a much smaller percentage, that would help us generate fee income. So, that will be brought to you down the road, so we're looking into it. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Township liaison, in this, in that seat, I think, for the vote this evening, just the fact that we are representative on this steering committee is a quantum leap from the relationship we have had in the past, and I am confident that, whereas there may have been a tenuous relationship in the past, they may not agree with us all the time, but we'll know reason, and that it's not based upon pig-headed issues, as it may have been in the past. Public relations, try and clean that up.
It's looking like a real leak.
The parent form that was scheduled for September thirtieth, we're moving to October twenty-second at Reifton, tentatively, we were going to do a presentation to math programs, and that's already the, that already was scheduled through Mrs. Rockland at Reifton, so we're going to do it all together at Reifton on the twenty-second of October. And the color run from the foundation, people can still sign up, there is a change, are you going to cover this?
No, go ahead.
Because of parking, it's not a color run in the park, it's really going to start and end at Reifton because of parking, but people can still sign up to walk a run on September twenty-seventh. And there's now about six hundred pounds of colored powder sitting out in our hallway.
Very good.
It brings us a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Dizzi.
There was a foundation board meeting tomorrow night.
Foundation board meeting tomorrow night. BCTC, Mr. Dizzi.
Oh, actually, we're right on top of it at BCTC, we, we just voted last week, it was last Wednesday, we voted to reinstate Dr. George as the superintendent of record.
(laughing).
So, we're just right from that. We did have a successful, we had, we had a successful auction of the student-built house, and we were able to sell that for two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, there were five bidders, it took about three minutes. Here, let me, let me tell you, if you have not had the opportunity ever, we build one of those houses every two years, and in all, I'll tell you, before I was on the board, we have twenty-seven lots left, we build a house every two years, so, you know, we're right on top of it. We got, we got fifty-four years worth of construction left. But the houses are just, you ever get a chance to get over there and tour the house? This one was in the Perks County Parade of Homes.
Yeah.
And it did win the Parade of Homes, and this is the second time in four years that the house has won the Parade of Homes. But you talk about to skill the kids, like the last house that we sold, it was a, it was a large, open stairwell with a banister on both sides, and every one of the spindles on the banister was hand-turned.
Wow.
Is this an oldie on Friedensburg on the left as you're going out towards Kings?
Yeah, actually, you have to, you have to go up, you'll make that, like, the school is here, and right before you get to the school, if you're coming from, if you're coming from Mount Penn.
Right.
Right before you get to the school, there's a left, and then another left, and the house is sitting.
Oh, okay.
A lot sit back in here, but it's a.
Our board hasn't visited the BCTC.
That's, yeah, we had tried, we had tried to do that, yeah.
That's right, that's right, there wasn't enough time.
Yeah, but maybe we can try and plan something for this year.
Sure. Do you have a preference as to what month or anything?
Oh, I think, you know, if you and Dr. Lee's can work it out, I think we can.
Well, she gets to give it to you.
Yeah, and then just one, one other thing I wanted to talk about, please, for those of you that don't know, the Career Technology Center is ISO certified, and it's a, it's, it's a certification and management technique that looks at very, very accurate job descriptions, people know what their, you know, what their responsibilities are, but part of it is something that they call continuous progress, and as part of that, every student and every staff member completes a questionnaire on an annual basis, and then there's a, they have these forms, they're called OFIs, and it's an opportunity for improvement. And it was something I had mentioned to Dr. Martin, I, I think that we've been talking a little bit about three sixty and, you know, that kind, and, and I think this could possibly be something that could help us with that. They collect an incredible amount of data, and their approach is almost like instructional, that we use instructional data, like, here's where we're weak and this is where we need to improve our instruction or center our instruction. Their, their approach is, if a kid's not happy, or a group of students is not happy, or a staff member is not happy with something that's being done a certain way, we look at that, and that's how we improve the organization, by figuring out ways of improving, you know, it helps you to zero in on what you want to go after first. I, I think it's something that we should take a look at. And, and that's all I have from these.
Thank you, sir. Facilities?
I'll be discussing with Ann Guy, there's a time we could meet in October with the committee, at this time I don't have a specific date, one I have in my mind is October eighth, but.
Well, can I just ask, maybe this exists already, do you think there are actually a definitive timeframe for the bus project, just what are the, what are the benchmarks in the project? Somebody use this on the end of my mind, like, is there a, like, what's coming before the board, when it's coming before the board, because I think one of the things we've talked about, we would be approving this very quickly, so what is, what are the things that, that are going to happen? When we get from architect, when we go to township zoning, hearing board, township supervisor, you know, what, what is that sort of whole plan? I think it would be important to see.
Right, AEM is working on that, and they're waiting for feedback from Stackhouse and RIB Engineering, but what I indicated before was just, he, today gave me just a general outline, but the next, what he had said, and when that's developed, it will be provided to the board, but on November eighteenth, the board has to approve a schematic, this year, so they'll be back in front of the board on November eighteen. What he indicated to me, there will be some cost estimates available with that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. One?
Can I report?
Ms. Dizzi, name is?
Our payment request in your, in your pink packet, attachment XIX, total amount of bills we paid this month was one million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. I'm going to be, I'm going to pay these bills.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a second discussion. All in favor, please indicate so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Martin?
Well, related to goal number three, now approved by the board this evening about strengthening the district anti-bullying program at all grade levels, I believe it was Dr. Bender, this summer when, when we met, who asked to have the board provided with some information regarding the program at Junior High, which is the Alveas program, anti-bullying program, and such things as how much time is involved in it, and how much time on class and so forth, and how much instructional time for the students and so forth. So, I have a report on that, it'll be very brief, but I'll summarize, the cost factor, with about half the material, half the cost being related to the purchase of materials for the teachers and students, and the other half being related to training, the cost for that is about three to four thousand dollars, a little over three thousand dollars, and another three thousand dollars, excuse me, three thousand dollars to four thousand dollars related to the cost of materials, another three thousand dollars related to the training of the staff members. So, about six to seven thousand dollars in total for a school of seven hundred students, well, about six hundred and fifty now students, for training, and then, of course, they have to have some maintenance training every year, and as new teachers are hired, you know, they're paired up with a veteran teacher to learn and understand the program so they can teach it as well. The classes meet, I'll call them classes, but the sessions meet two times a month for a period of thirty-five minutes for each session, and what they do to fit it in is they shave a few minutes off each class that day, it's called the, and on Alveas Day, and on Alveas Days, twice a month, they shave, I don't know, maybe it's about three to four minutes off each class in order to fit that in. The second semester, they only need once a month instead of twice a month, and that's because of all the testing and other interruptions that occur in the second semester, and the teachers were concerned about the disruption from the testing and then also having to layer in the Alveas sessions for the students. So, basically, it's twice a month first semester, once a month second semester, and starter cost of about, let's say, seven thousand dollars, it would obviously be about double lift for building the size of the high school because of the double amount of kids. That's, that's really about it, unless there's other details, quite a few other details, but I didn't necessarily want to go into, to everything unless, unless the board felt necessary, had further questions.
So, what happens if you shave the time off to get a deal for it so quick during the day? What happens with the kids?
Well, they go back to their homeowner teacher, which is the Alveas teacher, and they receive a, a lesson basically in, you know, anti-bullying.
Oh, so it's an interaction between the teacher and the student?
Yes.
Twice the first semester?
Yes. There might be some role-playing, there might be some video involved, there are many components to the program, and I haven't seen them all myself, but Junior High has copies of the curriculum if you're ever interested in hearing it. That's all I have.
Mr. Quirrell, do you have a picture I should look forward, I mean, for list of payments, I, I ended up, I admitted that we have an attachment nineteen dash one for additional payments of thirty-three thousand, eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. I think maybe that was just put on this evening, I'm signing up for the package this evening.
In your summary, that would have been included in your numbers.
Yeah, oh, was it?
Yes.
All right, I was just going to make sure we pay all our bills.
Right, yeah, that is.
All right, good, all right. Before the chart.
Mr. Quirrell, one more quick thing before we move on to the court, very quick. I believe last week in your folders, you had this flyer, the video conference for the Pennsylvania Basic Education Funding Campaign, and that is really about learning, and about the statewide coalition for adequate and equitable public school funding formula. It's going to be held, it's a video conference, it's going to be held at BCIU on Tuesday, September thirtieth, which is next, is that next Tuesday or Tuesday? Tuesday.
Two weeks.
Okay, two weeks, tonight, from seven PM to eight forty-five PM at BCIU, and if anyone would like to attend, we could register you online, you could just let Donna know if you would like to attend that, and we'll get you registered. There's no cost involved, I believe. There's no cost involved, I believe.
Motion of peace, PSB officers, PSBA. We've provided this information at the workshop. We really only have two positions that we need to address. Russ, you know these people.
Yes, I do, I do.
Based upon the credentials, you have any recommendation?
Both the credentials and the experience. Chuck Ballard has been involved in the School Board Association for many years. He's probably been on his board for about 18 years. Chuck is at East Penn in Amayis, and I would strongly recommend him, I think he would be a good president-elect. And on the other position, the, I believe he's at large position.
Yeah, the at-large position.
Yeah, Mike Fasenettos currently serves as the president of the Bethlehem Board, and I have done some work, I was a representative of PSEA Eastern Region when Bethlehem went through a series of two pretty big layoffs, of well over 100 teachers each time. And I found Mike to be someone who's extremely pro-education and seems to have his act together as far as a sense of fair play, doing what's best for the district kind of thing. I have a great deal of respect for him, and I would recommend him.
I want to address the position of president-elect for the PSBA. I think we can go by show of hands. On favor, Mr. Ballard, raise your hands, please. That's unanimous. And Mark Miller, that's not a contested, neither the vice president nor the treasurer, on favor of Michael Fasenetto, please raise your hands, please. That also is unanimous. The secretary, please report that through the PSBA, please. Dr. Fries, take this one out.
I'm going to kind of go down and summarize this. This is our 12th year at Reiften, and it's kind of interesting because in the 12 years, our first year, we had 12 sections of fifth grade and 12 sections of sixth grade. This is our first year since that time where we're back to those numbers again. And it's really nice to have 12, you know, one extra classroom. We're about, that number has increased a little bit, we're about 637 students. We ended the year around 640. I think in the 12 years that we've been at Reiften, the highest number we've ever had was 720 students. So there has been a decrease. It's been a very good start in terms of student achievement. We continue to have learning support teachers, gift teachers, our reading specialists pushing into classrooms, which gives them an opportunity to work with more students. And I've been very pleased to, very pleased to report that when we received our PSSA scores back this year, we actually saw increases in our economically disadvantaged as well as our IEP students. Really worked hard to get as much support as possible, and that was very nice to see. We're continually concentrating on balanced literacy. Karen DiNazio has done a nice job working with our staff. She always asks and says that she should have a room at Reiften. She's worked very, very hard with our staff, as well as Julie Klein. We certainly have been able to see those results in the classroom. It's only been a few weeks, but we have seen very good things with our math program, with investigations in college prep math. It is an enormous amount of work for our teachers, but I can't say, I can't say enough. They are just doing a terrific job. It has been a real team effort. In fifth grade, Paul McCracken has, he is our, our man that's really going around and helps all the fifth grade teachers. He'll teach some of the, some of the material after school, making sure that everybody understands it. They have really worked through things together. Many teachers were in over the summer doing a lot of preparing. Many teachers have spent a lot of time at night preparing. So fifth grade have been very pleased. Our sixth grade teachers with the college prep math get together several times a week. All of the math teachers get together several times a week and review the curriculum, are going through, trying to make sure that they can find ways to help each other out. They're sharing lesson plans. There's a lot of cooperation, and it has worked very well. As part of the implementation of this new math program, we have really looked at our groupings. In the past, we had math classes where we had our high math class, and we had blended average, and we had a low math class for the first time this year. In both fifth and sixth grade, we have a high math class, and then we have blended the other three classes on each team, which so far, we have seen great benefits. In sixth grade, it's no longer considered the high math class, we have an accelerated math class in which they are doing the first book, and then half of the second book, which is half the second book that, half of the second book is the book that they would be using, or course two, I'm sorry, that they would be using at the junior high. So that has been, has been very successful thus far. So really, what's going on there is it's course one, half of course two, and then when they're in seventh grade, they'll be the second, half of course two, and then course three. So that's where we're at. Now, we're at our third cohort. It's our third year with the pen literacy program, where we have our teachers who are teaching reading and writing across all curriculums. We had teachers, the sixth grade teachers in science and social studies during the ACT 80 days, work with Karen DiNazio to come up with ways that we can increase writing in both science and social studies classes and math as well. That has been very successful, and as I said, we have a third cohort that's going. We have four sixth grade teachers that's going to be trained this year. So that should be, should continue our success. In terms of teacher observation, we have 10 new staff members at Reiften. If you recall, in the spring, when I talked to you, they said that we had 10 pregnancies at Reiften last year, and we still have several people that are out of maternity leave, but we have five new, five new teachers, and then we have five temporary, I guess, five long-term subs at Reiften. But we've been very pleased. Certainly, I want to thank Betty Weber for all of the efforts that she made for us over the summer. I think I spent more time with her than I probably did at Reiften, we were here doing a lot of interviews. But the 10 people we have at Reiften, they're just terrific. Because we have so many people that are new, and we have, in terms of the teacher effectiveness model, we've got 12 teachers this year that are on clinical observation, so we'll certainly be working with them. We continue to do our walkthroughs, getting into math classrooms, getting into language arts classrooms, trying to get into specialists. As I said, we really have seen very good things in our math program. Getting into the classroom really looks like it's supposed to. There are students that are working through problems, there's a lot of cooperation, a lot of talk through problem solving, teachers are getting around, helping. I spent a lot of time this summer looking at all of our aides across the building, trying to see if I could get some aides into the classrooms. So they're, they're in there as well. So it's, it has been a very good start. Programs and initiatives, learning-focused collaborative meetings, those are meetings that we do during the early release day. Teachers are now putting their plans together, and a lot of teachers in fifth grade that are working on math, in sixth grade, they're splitting up the day, the early release days. They are spending half of it dealing with language arts, and again, trying to work on our Pennsylvania Literacy Network initiative, and then the other half, they're working on math. We also have our specialists who are working on character building, character building information with our sixth grade teachers. Artist Residence Program, this year, they're going to have a drumming.
Excuse me, did you say drumming?
Drumming, yes, our percussionists. And they are bringing in a professional drummer to work with our students. That would be interesting. We are, the office is directly across the hall from that, so I'm looking forward to that.
Make sure they come before the board.
I'm personally looking forward to marching to the other different drummer. Thank you.
Your encouragement.
School climate and culture, wellness committee that has done a nice job over the years to help us with climate. We do team meetings, Patty and I get around to all of the team meetings that take place. Recent activities and upcoming events, we had our fifth grade orientation, Cricket and Love Reunite, both were very, very well attended. We had cars all over, done a drive. I will say that it was probably, probably the most well-attended meetings that we've had in a long time. Cricket and Love Reunite, we did have Heidi Roblin, our math coordinator, come and speak with our fifth grade parents as well as our sixth grade parents. She did a very nice job talking about the old programs compared to the new program, and there were a lot of very good questions from parents, but I thought it was a very successful, she did a very nice job. Derek Queen Knight, we had a lot of kids that came out to that, was pleased, and worked hard. Holiday concerts again, those were in December, and that should be very good, those are economically good.
Just as an aside, the governor was at the Kenworth, Derek Queen Knight. I'm reaching out in many different directions.
You just take a little heat.
Does anyone have any questions for Derek Fries?
I would just like to ask, first of all, thank you for taking my son off my hands for half the day, I appreciate you that, half the day. You know, I find these presentations to be very interesting, and I'm wondering why we can't move them up to start of, right after all the comments. I just think because this is the product that we're really working for here as a school board to see, and I think sometimes, you know, you get to be 9:30, and people start getting a little anxious about wanting to get out of here, and I think we make these guys sit through, you know, two and a half, three hours. I know it's a long day for everybody, I get that, but I find it to be interesting, I find it to be sort of what the outcome is of what we're trying to do here every day. And I wonder if we couldn't sort of flip it and have them up first, because I think we all might be a little more engaged or whatever.
Certainly, yeah, whatever the board would like.
That's neither here nor there for me, but the only problem, I might, we might have to reconsider, go back to the bank on those nights when we have. I'm going to take that back, let them hear, but I was thinking, well, we have a large public contingent here on a specific item, that they might grow restless, but let them hear what we do first, and I'll take the board's recommendation on that.
That's great.
It's a great idea, yep.
And the same, same with the budgets, I mentioned that before.
We should put those.
I think that should eat first, because when we get to slide 48 with that contest, oh, sorry.
Boy, slide three. Hey, just, yeah. That's 48 of 174.
Well, rewrite those, but any other questions for Dr. Fries?
Yes, and you mentioned that your PSSA scores were better than last year. Could you give us some idea of what they were?
Well, in reading, we, for fifth and sixth grade, 2013, we were at 75.2, and in 2014, we were at 76.3. But when I look at the increases, we went from 61 to 64.3 with our African-American, we went from 69.2 to 76.3 with our IEP, which is a really nice increase. And I really do believe it's the push-ins, and our teachers doing a terrific job, plus they came through four buildings as well. And our economically disadvantaged went from 60.3 to 71.1. And, you know, when you're talking about a school years ago that was in school improvement, to have increases like this is certainly really nice to see. And I was really proud of our staff and, you know, all of our people that are going to push-ins, because it's really giving them an opportunity to work with more students than they ever had before. Instead of going into classrooms, we have more guided reading groups, we have aides going in, our reading specialist does a terrific job, our gifted teachers are pulling kids out, out into the commentary and working with them on higher level, higher thinking skills. It's just, it's a terrific thing. It's been a work in progress, but now we're finally able to see the results.
How about your math?
Math, now, you know, as a building, we were 82% in 2013, and we did drop to 77.4. The IEP population in 2013 was 73.9, we increased to 76.3. Economically disadvantaged was 71.3 in 2013, and we increased to 73.5. But, you know, we have a new program for this year, and, you know, we're very excited about that.
I do think the push-in programs are, you know, have had a great, a lot of benefit to the students.
Two?
Two questions.
Hey.
I need to ask Dr. Fries.
Mike's wrong with Joe, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask Dr. Fries.
Yeah, that's why.
Two questions, well, I'm sorry, I just, I know I'm very wide, I lost a lot of weight. Do you envision the math night to come back? Any kind of discussion about that coming back? I know we usually had it at Reiften.
It was held at Reiften.
Yeah, but was that institute, I think that was organized by the lower, like, the kindergarten through fourth grade teachers.
Okay, so it was a math board.
Yeah, so.
And it held at Reiften, it was by the math coordinator, I don't know.
So maybe our new math, we're here.
There's already plans for a math night, we're having it in October, that Mr. Penner talked about it with his community relations, and also in the spring, we're going to be doing another one. Be different than the last, I wasn't here for, when you had it before.
That was more participatory, they would have stations that kids could go to and make things and to do, you know, do math activities and games and things like that.
Yeah, like there's a, like, they come in and they do a game, it's a math game, and they go over to.
It'd be like that, I thought it was more theme-based. I don't know. Okay, then, it's bad.
Yeah, he was, yeah, he wasn't here when we had the original math night.
Are there ideas for that?
With regards to the Washington trip, which kind of has somehow gone away, how and how do we get that back, or what are we putting in place with, and what's going on there, anybody know? Because, I mean, I got a lot of feedback and emails telling me I was the one that got rid of it, and my response was, I don't know what you're talking about. Because I, I kind of got, kind of side, you know, taking, you know, I was like, what happened here? And I don't think I was the only one that got hit that way.
Last year, we went to the Swissofian Institute for the sixth grade.
Swissofian or Franklin Institute?
I'm sorry.
Swissofian is where we wanted to go, but Franklin Institute's still closed.
No, I'm sorry, that's missing, the Franklin Institute, yes, the Franklin Institute. And that went well, and we are planning on going there again this year.
Are they having a separate type of program put together there than they would have had in like a third grade type of tour? Is it like, are they still independently just touring Franklin Institute, or is there something set aside?
There are certain exhibits that they go in, you know, they still do the. There are certain exhibits that they go in, you know, they still do the parts, but they go to, I can certainly get the information.
I mean, what, I guess my question really was, I'm just wondering, what happened that it all fell apart? I was kind of so, I was shocked that it fell apart, because it was almost a tradition that went on for, I don't know, Carol, was your children, it was, Carol's kids did it, and they're just a little older than my children, and my kids did it, and I think everybody else's children here did it, and all of a sudden, it was gone. And it just didn't make sense to me, all of a sudden, we had this new policy that said it can't work, when it always worked, it was always successful. Children's behavior, I'd say 99.9% of the time was excellent, we never had issues with kids in DC as far as security, and all of a sudden, it was all this negative feedback that we had a security concern, we had safe concern, we had this guy and the other. And I sat there going, this doesn't make any bloody sense to me, because it's also funded by the parents, we're not picking up a dime of it, and it always seemed like it was a great success, and all of a sudden, we lost it. And no one came to us and talked to us, and all of a sudden, we had to find why we lost this program, and I just, I was really disappointed, not in yourself, I was disappointed in the fact that we just didn't have. I just thought it was just very, it was a great moment for kids whose possibly siblings went through that program, and then all of a sudden, they thought they were going, and it was gone. You know, it just didn't make sense. Sorry.
We met with the APT people last year, and offered them the opportunity to pick up the responsibility for organizing and check rolling that affair, and by mutual agreement, we ended up with the Franklin Institute solution. So we certainly would not deny the APT the opportunity to do that, but that's where this is at now. Any other questions for Dr. Fries? Thank you, sir. For all of you, the meetings are going a little longer.